Is called to order, the pledge will be led by Board Member Gigi Robinson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gigi. Roll call, Ms. Stidham.
At five present and two absent.
Thank you so much. Welcome, everybody, to the January 30th Board Meeting. It's an exciting one, so many great things to celebrate tonight. Thank you for being here. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Standing.
Motion by Gigi Robinson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pat Welsh. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Ms. Stidham?
That's all in favor, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Special items, individuals to address the board. I will read the policy related to this. It's 1.404. There shall be a public comment period for each meeting with actionable items on the agenda, with the exception of teacher disciplinary hearings. Comments shall be limited to topics listed on the agenda. The total public comment period shall be no more than 15 minutes. If an individual wishes to address the board, he or she shall sign up on the form provided from the beginning of the board meeting to request time to speak. Each speaker shall be given no more than three minutes. Do we have anyone who is wanting to address the board on an agenda item? Seeing there's no one, we're going to move on to CTE update. Jessie Kinsey.
How are y'all?
Great, how are you?
Great. Can I have that TV where y'all can see it? Is it possible for me to tilt it around a little bit? Afraid they wouldn't be able to see. Can you see?
You can't, you want to come over here.
It's your pack camp.
There you go.
We don't see it.
Here.
Yeah. Thank you.
My name is Jessie Kinsey. I am the CTE Director, the Career and Technical Education Director for Telahoma City Schools. I'm here tonight to talk to you guys mostly about the Innovative School Models Grant that we received last year, but the presentation's going to talk about a lot of the things that we're doing because this grant really complements all that we're trying to accomplish for CTE for our district. So we're going to start out with a short video that our students created, and I asked the students a one-word question, and the question was, "What does CTE mean to me?" So they're answering that question.
Option to broaden your horizon and experience and just gain things, lessons, life lessons. And then I took the class because I would see videos all the time on the internet, just NFL sideline videos. I was like, I just want to be there, I would record that, so I took broadcast media, I recorded, take pictures. Yeah.
CTE classes in Telahoma really help out, see what you want to do in the future. And specifically, Miss Lyons' class pre-law, it helps you understand the law more and the courtroom more, and if you take that class, you'll know if you want to go into law in the future.
I think CTE classes at our school give students many opportunities to explore different jobs, more specifically, Miss Audubon's class, the nursing class. I graduated this year with a CNA licensure, and it helped me in nursing school and college.
Okay, so that just gave you a little glimpse into the life of a student in CTE, and you can tell that that was definitely not prepped, it was raw, and the students did all, broadcasting students did all the recording and the editing, and set it to the music and that sort of thing. So that is student work. So our students are doing things like this every single day. It's very hands-on, and the students do love their classes, they love their teachers. We have a, you can go to the next slide. We have a phenomenal group of teachers that are CTE teachers. We have 18 high school teachers, that includes one full-time teacher at TVA in CTE, that's Mr. Holliday. And then we have four middle school teachers this year, with the incorporation of the STEM teachers at the middle school, that gives us four. So we have 15 high school programs of study, and in your folder, that's the paper that has the yellow sheets on it, the yellow font, and 15 programs of study, and then two middle school pathways. Next slide. So this is CTE by the numbers. So in the green boxes, that gives you our total student enrollment for both high schools, and the green box below gives you our number of students that are enrolled in at least one CTE class. A lot of students have multiple CTE classes because that, again, is their passion. So we're about 82% at Telahoma High School, represented in CTE, and 64% at Telahoma Virtual Academy. All right, so what we are doing with the Innovative High Schools Grant, and we'll call it ISM, just for short as we talk today, is we are really trying to reimagine the high school experience for our students and change their version of school, because the world is changing, we have to keep up with that. So the three ways that we're really trying to accomplish that are through innovation, intentional planning and work, and this aligns with your strategic plan, the school-to-work pathway, and then also removing barriers so that all students can participate. That's really a focus of this grant. So this list is some of the things. We were awarded $2 million, so it's $1 million for Telahoma High School, and then $500,000 for West and $500,000 for East. So this is just a fraction of really what we're trying to do, but these are the big things. So one of the big things at the high school is redesigning the library to be a college and career readiness center, and we'll talk more about that in just a minute. We're offering and updating our labs in CTE to make those industry standards, so we're using a lot of money for new equipment. We're also purchasing the same or very similar equipment for the middle schools so that they have an opportunity to practice using that equipment in middle school, so they're really getting a head start. Lab supplies and materials, those are things that we can't buy with Perkins funding, which is the federal funding we receive, because most of that's consumable. We were also fortunate to purchase two CTE vehicles. I don't know if you've heard about those, but we have a Suburban and a Chrysler minivan, and those are utilized to take students in smaller groups on field trips or to competitions, various things like that, that we may need smaller vehicles for, especially if a bus is not available. We are taking lots of field trips through this grant. We're really promoting industry and college tours, because we want students to see what's available in Telahoma and in our region for them to work, so they don't have to move away, they understand what's out there. Industry certifications, we'll talk about that in just a few minutes, a little bit more detail. Gap tuition, this, students can qualify for the dual enrollment grant, but sometimes there are costs that are not covered by the grant, the dual enrollment grant, so this grant could pick up. So if we had a low-income student that maybe couldn't afford the materials for the class, especially some of those TCAT classes require them to have certain tools or certain specific books, we could provide some of that, or if the grant didn't cover all of their tuition, we could provide that and remove that barrier. We've been able to hire a work-based learning coordinator for the high school, and you'll see the growth in that program due to that position, and then also both STEM teachers at the middle school, so one for each. Next. Okay, so if you haven't seen the library, here's a few pictures of what we've done so far. It is still a work in progress. We started this summer in the remodel, so most of the remodel's done, we're still working on signage, we're still working on the coffee shop, and maybe one other thing, one other thing, I think. Yeah. Yes, technology, that's it. I knew it was one other thing, yes. Audiovisual equipment has been ordered, but we are like backlogged. The things are just not coming in like they used to. We placed that order, I think, in November, and then Dr. Sudbury just checked, we're expecting it to be installed in March. So that will be in there to be utilized for meetings. There is a private meeting room in the back, so that audiovisual equipment is there, but there will be nice, brand-new audiovisual equipment, so it'll be state-of-the-art. So if you guys need to have meetings or community meetings, it'll be a great smaller space for that. Next. Epsos, if you haven't heard that buzzword, that's a buzzword in education, early post-secondary opportunities. So what we're really promoting is for students to get their toe in the water into early college opportunities. For our high schools, that would be through AP, dual enrollment, and statewide dual credit. And in 2223, we had 428 students enrolled in those credits. So that's a really good number. We expect to see growth because we're promoting that, but that was our number last year. Next. This is a sample of some of the equipment that we've purchased, some in our high school, a lot of this is in the middle schools. We've got VR goggles, not only for drones, but also we have middle school students that are doing welding through VR goggles. That's a brand-new equipment, state-of-the-art, and it is modeled by the same manufacturer that makes the welding equipment that they would use out in industry. So they're learning in middle school how to do welding, to get excited about it. We also have aviation simulators at the middle schools and high schools, lots of audiovisual equipment, so they're doing a lot of the same things at the middle schools as they're doing at the high school, interviews, announcements. I know that Rachel's doing a lot of really cool stuff at East. We're redoing their studios and that sort of thing. This is just a sample, and also aircraft engine. College and industry tours, I tracked the data for fall, because we really didn't start fully implementing the grant until this year. We got the money like mid-year last year. We have taken 17 field trips in the fall, which is really good. We typically run about eight to 10 in a year, so we're already way past that. So teachers are taking advantage of this opportunity through the grant to pay for the bus, the bus driver, that's paid for through the grant, and also the CTE vehicles. So if they need to take a smaller group, or we can't find a bus driver, I'll jump in and drive one car, the teacher will drive another, and we'll take as many kids as we can take, you know, safely, and the seat belts. Here's a few more tours that we've taken. We went to Ascension St. Thomas in Murfreesboro, did a behind-the-scenes tour of the hospital, that was really cool, and then a local tour, our digital arts students went over to Threads. Next. As I spoke earlier about the middle school CTE program being new, we're really focusing on building the bench. When Dr. Stevens and I talked about this whole idea, you know, we talked about great sports programs don't start in high school. So we have to start that earlier, we have to get them in the mindset of thinking about career, getting tools in their hands, getting equipment in their hands. So, you know, this is, this really promotes that engagement. Students, you know, love coming to school. I have a student that's in seventh grade, my, I have one child in seventh grade, and he just loves everything that they're doing in their STEM program, and it's just, he makes them want to come to school. So it makes it more meaningful for them. West is also doing some really cool things. They had Nissan come over, an engineer from Nissan come over and do a full day of activities with the STEM students as they transitioned in their classes, so there's some pictures from that. And here's also some pictures of them using those VR goggles to weld. So we did learn that they really need to be sitting down. So if you never use VR goggles, it's kind of scary to be standing up because you can lose your balance real easy. So we sit down now. But there's also some pictures of girls, which we want to promote, non-traditional, so girls in aviation, they're flying a plane there, and this is middle school. Work-based learning, we talked about that being one of your, part of your strategic plan, it's also super important to the high school. Ms. Angela Welch is our work-based learning coordinator, she's doing a fantastic job with that. She's not the only person teaching work-based learning, but she is one of the main ones. And this is a picture here of one of our students that is in work-based learning, he is actually employed by Nissan. We have five students that are over at Nissan now, doing an internship at Nissan, they're making almost $20 an hour, they're accruing PTO, they're accruing sick time, all those things like a regular employee, and they're gaining some valuable skills. They're working about 25 hours a week at Nissan, several of them are in the band or play football, so these are really involved students that are dedicated. They go to work at 5:00 every morning, and they work from 5:00 to 10:00, and then they come to school. So they are loving it, and every day they come by my office because they have class next door to me, and they say, "Oh, my gosh, let me tell you what I learned today." And the students shared this picture with me, so they are just loving it, and they're not supposed to have their phones at work, so their boss actually sent them this picture. So I was glad, because I quizzed them about that. Go ahead. So here are our numbers. Last year, Ms. Welch started with us, and the grant actually picked her up full-time this year, so you guys paid for her last year, I believe, if I'm right, Hank. That's how we did it, because it came out better for us to be able to utilize more money in the grant. So last year, even though it was our first year having her, we had a big jump. The year before, in 2122, we were at 58, and then we jumped to 141. So it was a big jump there for work-based learning. And then the next slide is this year's numbers. So we've seen some growth even with this year. We're going to continue to see growth, because again, when you have opportunities like the Nissan partnership happening, students get real excited, we get phone calls, people want to know about it. So we're having a meeting next week, if anybody says, "Hey, when are we going to learn about that?", it's next week. And our focus, really, now that we've kind of got the program established, is creating intentional partnerships. So we want to see more things like the Nissan internship happening, we want to see students working in their industry. Industry certifications is one of the big pieces that we brought on with ISM funds. This is a chance for students to showcase their talents outside of a test score. So they get to take industry certifications, these are national industry certifications. This is one of the pieces of equipment that we purchased with a grant to be able to offer the precision measurement instrument, industry certification. This toolbox and the tools in it was $39,000. So this toolbox is shared between the STEM classrooms and the welding and machining classrooms, so we have three classrooms actually using this, and this is a Level III industry cert, which is great for our district. So we started this year with a goal, in CTE, of climbing to 500. This is a goal that we set as a department, and you can kind of see our numbers go up as, from 2020, we started with only 43 industry certs in that year, and last year, we finished with 236. This year, our goal is 350. So we're really working on promoting that, and the teachers are buying in. Each one of them has an individual goal that'll lead up to this 350, hopefully, which is where we're at, working toward. This slide just gives you a breakdown of what those industry credentials were last year. Again, the students are compiling and working now, so we'll have a slide like this next year to kind of compare. Go ahead. And this letter was written to one of our teachers from a former student, so I'm going to give you just a second to read that. So this is Kayla, and she came by to just wish Mr. Edwards well, he's retiring at the end of this year, and she brought him this letter. So I just wanted to share with you guys how important this is for our students, even afterwards. She's going to go on to be a great architect, but for her, she learned so much from Mr. Edwards, and the industry certifications mean a lot. So, yes, yes. So anyway, thank you, guys. If you have questions for me, you can always find me, email, phone, I'm at the high school. So, thank y'all very much.
Thank you so much. That was wonderful. I think one of the things that you said that is sometimes hard for all of us to remember is you said "their world," and their world is so different, and it's just wonderful to see all the great things happening. Thank you so much, Jessie, that was wonderful. Now, Teacher of the Year recognition, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, this is always an exciting time of year, and I do want to thank Jessie Kinsey. It's exciting to see one of the priorities of the TCS School Board Strategic Plan come to life, so thank you for that. And now on to some great stuff. We love celebrating our Teachers of the Year. We have amazing teachers throughout this district. Tonight is very special for this select group. The level of our, the commitment that our educators has is second to none. These Teachers of the Year are making a difference each day for students, they're making a difference for their peers, and those peers have acknowledged their exceptional work. In just a moment, I'm going to invite their principals to come forward, and I'm going to invite that Teacher of the Year to come forward. Teachers of the Year, you'll just stand in the center, I know that feels uncomfortable, and you'll smile and look at everyone, you'll have someone come by and give you a certificate, and they'll stand with you as your principal reads just a little bit about you. And because we've got some people needing to go to another event, we're going to start here with Casey Locklear, one of our High School Teachers of the Year. So Dr. English, if you'll come forward, I know you have some things you want to share. Mm-hmm. And I think someone has a certificate.
Oh, unmute. Yeah.
So they got it? We're blessed at THS to have some really incredible teachers. My non-negotiable for any teacher is, you got to like kids. If you don't like kids, go someplace else, because they know, they can tell. They can also tell when you truly love them and care about them, and our three Teachers of the Year exemplify that standard. Casey Locklear is a phenomenal teacher. Also, I should tell you, the, one of the greatest joys of my year, right before Christmas, I sent an email to all the Teacher of the Year and tenure teachers, students, and just asked them to say things, nice things, you know, if they could, about their teachers, things that might honor them. And to watch your inbox flood, I had, I took a screenshot and shared it with Dr. Stevens of a whole page on my phone that was nothing but student replies to that email to say great things about their teachers. So. Casey Locklear is a phenomenal teacher with unique ability to connect with students who might otherwise avoid bonding with teachers. Students describe her as fantastically herself. She sets an example that it's cool to read, to be highly intelligent, to doodle, and to show up at sporting events. When asked, her students express gratitude for Mrs. Locklear's dedication in planning each class period, making the learning experience thorough and structured, yet enjoyable. Her positive and caring nature is seen in her smile, and she creates a safe and inspiring environment for her students. Mrs. Locklear is commended for being an amazing teacher and for being a caring, charismatic, selfless, and humorous teacher. Her students love and admire her for her ability to make the classroom feel like a home and motivate them to keep learning and fostering a love for science. It's my honor to work with Casey and witness the impact she has on our students and our school. And to further draw the point home, she's trying to get out of here right now, so she can go be honored in Winchester by a former student who has identified her as their most influential teacher. So. Casey Locklear.
And Dr. English, while you're there, I know you have a teacher that is unable to be here this evening, Ms. Woodard, but we'd love to hear all about Sharon Woodard.
Certainly. Well, again, similarly, Sharon is a workhorse, she never stops, and of course, she is otherwise engaged working with students tonight. So Sharon Woodard is described as the backbone of THS, having dedicated so many years of her life to our school. She is recognized for her continuous efforts in organizing our pep rallies, spirit days, and homecoming. Her commitment to her students is evident, and they love her for it. One student credits Mrs. Woodard for introducing her to DECA and encouraging her to participate, but she didn't stop there. She also bought her a professional outfit to wear during the competition, and then paid the rest of her expenses to participate. That student said, "I've never had another teacher care so much and want me to succeed more," and they ultimately placed at the state level. To me, Ms. Woodard is the picture of a great teacher. It's not about the subjects we teach, it's about the relationships we foster and the lives we change, and I'm so proud to call her my friend and colleague, Sharon Woodard.
All right. And we will hear from Dr. English again shortly, but first, we're now going to move to East Lincoln Elementary, and Dawn Kane, if you will come forward. Mr. Hargrove, I know you've got wonderful things to share about her.
Yes, ma'am. There's no greater compliment than to be complimented and recognized by your peers. Congratulations not only to Dawn, but to all the Teachers of the Year, that's a pretty awesome thing, having a little entourage, your husband Edgar, 33 years, and the rest of the four horsemen. When I first came, that was their first-grade team. Thank you, guys, for coming out. Dawn's a native of Telahoma, actually grew up at First Christian Church with you, didn't I, Dawn? Very blessed. She has three children, all of them attended Telahoma City Schools. Her husband Edgar, the same, so we're wildcat through and through. Dawn's committed 14, all 14 years of her teaching career to East Lincoln and Telahoma City Schools, and I asked her to, her peers, to share a comment or a phrase about Dawn, and here's what they said about her. Dedicated to the profession, makes daily investments in her children, always a reliable team player, always looking for ways to improve her craft, get the same effort every day, heart of gold, does the little things that make a huge difference, kind to everybody. She will bend over backwards to help you. Dawn, looks like I'm going to have to get a larger tiara for you. Dawn, we love you, we appreciate you and what you do for our children at East Lincoln. Thank you.
And now, we will welcome Jack T. Fair Elementary Teacher of the Year, Tracy Butner. There are exciting things happening at Fair, I look forward to sharing that with you all a little bit later. Mr. Moore.
All right. Once again, I want to say the same as Mr. Hargrove there, congratulations to all Teachers of the Year. What an honor, as again, your peers. If you don't know how this is, it's their peers vote on them, just like maybe homecoming queen and king and things like that, so you kind of look at it like that for you young folks that are in the audience tonight. But like I said, congratulations. But like I said, congratulations. Tracy Butner, she has been in education for about 18 years now. She has spent 13 of those in the sped, different areas, EA, things like that, and five, about five years ago, she got her teaching license. So she, she jumped over from the EA and then helping out into the teaching world and has done a phenomenal job for myself and even before me, Debbie Edens was the one that hired Tracy into Jack T. Fair. So I want to use the word grit to, and I want to use the letters of grit to describe Tracy as we go, because Tracy is definitely somebody that, if I'm going to take them into a educational war, I'm going in with her, because she's going to, she's going to fight tooth and nail, not only for students, but for her colleagues and Jack T. Fair and Telahoma City Schools. And even her husband is a part of the system as well. Mikey Buckner is part of West Middle School, so they're a lot like us. When they go home, it's, it's talking about education all the time, so. But the first one is the G. She's a go-getter. If you want something done, you want it done right, she's the person to, to go talk to, but go-getter for the, for the G. Rigorous for the R. If you go into her classroom, from behavioral rigor to educational rigor, you're not going to find a better teacher. She, she holds students to a standard, and even at the beginning of the year, that standard's a little tough for some folks, even in fourth grade. But after you see her commitment to that, things start to ease up, and they, they figure out that, hey, she's here for them. Intentional. She's very intentional of the eye of what she wants to get done for that day. The students know what they're, what they're expected of as they walk in the room, so very intentional. And you think, man, she's, she's a tough teacher, right? But you will, thoughtful for the T. You're not going to find a teacher that loves her kids more than Tracy does. And every time they come in here, she builds relationships. I like the word Greg used earlier, or Dr. English used earlier, of it's all about relationships, because they don't, teachers and, you know this, and students, you remember teachers more than you remember the subject necessarily that they taught you in the long run. So, we just got in the car the other day and drove one home. I said, "Ms. Butner, we've got to take a kid home today. Let's go." And without hesitation, she jumps in the car. She knows her students and what they need outside of school. So we, we were in class today, and I asked one student, and I asked him right in front of her, I said, "What's, what's something you would say about Ms. Tracy?" And being a younger sibling, we're all T. Moores. I've got two brothers, Terry and Trent Moore, but I'm the youngest, and you never want to be called by your, by your older brother's name or sister's name or anything like that. She says, "It was Braxton Alexander," and he says, "She's only called me Mason three times this year." So that was, that was a great thing. So Tracy, we love you at Jack T. Fair. Congratulations, and looking forward to many more years.
All right. And now, we welcome REE Elementary Teacher of the Year, Jennifer Watford.
Well, I also want to thank everyone for being here tonight and say congratulations to all of the Teachers of the Year. And I see lots of other teachers in the audience and families, because when you're a teacher, your family's supporting you also. And I'm going to share something that Jennifer shared with me about that as well. But we're excited to have Jennifer here tonight. Starting out, Jennifer has 15 years' teaching experience, and she was at East Primary in Shelbyville as a kindergarten teacher. It's where she first started, seven years, and then she was eight years at Robert E. Lee in first grade, but she also was one of our educational assistants before she became a first-grade teacher. So Jennifer's been with us for a long time, and that's actually when we first connected, she was an educational assistant. But I asked Jennifer, I said, "Why did you want to become a teacher?" And this just really spoke to my heart. She said, "I chose, I chose teaching because I wanted to impact lives in a positive and unforgettable way." She said, "I wanted to make learning fun, and I wanted to create a place where students would be excited to come. I knew that as a teacher, I would go the extra mile. I'd help my students find success within themselves." And so what I can tell you was, right after Jennifer was awarded our Robert E. Lee Teacher of the Year, I was out in the community, and I had a parent come up and start telling me about their child, who was having a wonderful year, and they started talking about Jennifer. "We are so excited that she's the Teacher of the Year. My son comes home, he loves school. He loves being there." And I just thought about when Jennifer, when you wrote this and I read it, I thought, that's what I'm already hearing from parents when children go home. Today, I was talking to our school counselor, and she was sharing with me a story, and Jennifer's going to smile when she hears this, because it's so real. She said that she has duty outside at dismissal, and she's at a cone, and Jennifer's over here calling for people to come. She's on the other side. And she said, as they're coming to her cone, "Bye, Ms. Watford! Bye! See you later!" And making sure that she says goodbye to her. And she said, "It's not just one student. They're constantly coming up saying that." So again, that resonates with that love for you and that relationship that you've built. I also asked Jennifer, what was a memorable experience that she's had as a teacher? And I think many of you know, her first response was, "Wow, I've had so many memorable experiences that I could share, but there is one that's my favorite." And she had, had shared this with me before. You know, when you're a teacher, so many times you have children that are perfectionists, and they have to get it just right, has to be perfect. But because Jennifer knows her students, and she wants to do something really special with them, she had said, "Perfect is boring," and she would share that with them. And so she was telling a story about a child that went home, mom bakes cookies, and they're all messed up when they come out. And the child said to the mom, "It's okay, Mom. Perfect is boring." And she said, that just spoke to her heart, that that child carried that motto home, used it in their own life, because they truly understood the meaning. So then we have Jennifer, who has a servant's heart. She's REE Yearbook Committee. She's been on that. She's been a first-grade rep. She's been an ELA rep. She's been new teacher mentor. One of the things that she did when we adopted a new curriculum, Jennifer took it upon herself to create PowerPoints that not only would be used by her team, but be used in the district. And she gave those freely from her heart, just very generous, to share those. And then toys for tots. At Christmas, Jennifer is always looking at ways to help others. Children brought in things to donate to other people in the community. And so with that, you know, I asked her, was there anything that she would want y'all to know? And she, she spoke about her family and said, you know, how much that this was a lifelong dream for her to be here, and it takes her family's support. And so I wanted to share that, too. But I did ask your colleagues some things about how they would describe you with just descriptive words, and the first thing that came was your heart, your passion, your love for students, how deep it is, that you will go that extra mile. Just today, she sends me a text. She's worried about a child. "Mary, what else can we do? How else can we test this child? What else can we do to check?" She's willing to not give up. If it's with trying to meet their needs, she's trying to continue to grow, that growth mindset. Passionate, but they also said passionate and compassionate, which I thought was neat. Loving and kind, that you're always wanting to help others, always willing to go, you know, above and beyond. Heart for everyone. Helpful, and that you are always, always encouraging with that sweet spirit. So it's, it's just such an honor to be here tonight and to say congratulations, and we are so thankful and proud of you for representing Robert E. Lee as our Teacher of the Year. So, thank you.
And now, we will move to East Middle School, Rachel Cunningham.
All right. I would like to congratulate all of our Teachers of the Year. So congratulations to all you guys. What an honor and an exciting time of year. If I smile, it's because I smile when I see Rachel Cunningham. She just has that personality that just, she's easy to talk to, and she just makes you want to smile. She is from Franklin County. She grew up in Franklin County, and she played two years of basketball at Lambeth. I'm putting myself to the test here. Two years at Auburn-McGumry. We also, we also ran one year of cross-country at Auburn-McGumry. We started our teaching career at Deckard for, we went back and forth. We said three and four, but four years. We spent six and a half years at North, and this has never happened to me in all, I've never seen this in my career. Rachel joined us in December of last year, last school year, and is our Teacher of the Year this year. I think our folks, I think Rachel's peers saw the work that she put in, the effort that she gave, and I think they rewarded that. So certainly, congratulations on a short time in Telahoma and already being Teacher of the Year. Rachel has made a tremendous impact at East. She teaches computer science. She teaches, she does our morning announcements, the, we do them through the video production classroom. She's our athletic director. She is very involved in our social media and all of those, like, social media, that's the right word. Yeah, all of those things. Has come in, has blended in with our school, has made a tremendous positive impact, and we are just blessed to get to work with you every day. Congratulations on being Teacher of the Year.
All right. And next, I will invite Dr. Tredway from Telahoma Virtual Academy. Their Teacher of the Year was here earlier, but had another commitment, and with snow and ice, we've done a lot of rescheduling, so he's going to tell us all about Whitney Morris.
Thank you all for being here tonight in this, to celebrate our Teacher of the Years. Coach Whitney Morris was selected by our peers, as a previous principal acknowledged earlier, that's how Teacher of the Years are selected. Ms. Morris graduated from Telahoma High School. She earned an Associate's Degree from Motlow State Community College, a Bachelor Degree from Middle Tennessee State University, and a degree, a Master's Degree from the University of Colorado at Denver, and her plus-30 from Tennessee State University. She also played softball collegiately at Motlow and MTSU, and she did not share this last part with me. I had to, to get this from another place. She also played professional softball in both the U.S. and Sweden, so that's an interesting fact. She's married to Chris Morris, who many of you know works in technology, and together they have two girls. She has 13 years' experience in education, with nine of the, nine of the 13 in the Telahoma City Schools. In addition to teaching physical education at TVA and THS, she serves as the Assistant Softball Coach and Assistant Strength Coach for the football team. She's currently in her third year of teaching at TVA, where she teaches PE and wellness. Coach Morris excels as a virtual teacher and earned a certification through Quality Matters, which is a global organization leading quality assurance in online and innovative digital teaching and learning environments. And we've heard a lot about relationship building, and that's really hard virtually, but she's excellent at it. She's in constant communication with her kids, and as previously mentioned, her expectations are off the, off the chart. If kids aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing, you can guarantee, I'll hear about it, their parents will hear about it, and the student will hear about it. So she's excellent in communicating her expectations. Coach Morris's online classes are designed to get kids up and moving, and she does incorporate wristbands, so each child is wearing a wristband that tracks their heart rate. She also teaches wellness in hopes of promoting positive lifelong habits. She incorporates wristbands into her lessons, as I previously noted, and she does that with ease, so they wear them, and then they're uploading their heart rates and things of that nature, calories, steps taking into her Canvas course. It's an honor to recognize Coach Whitney Morris as the, to be with you, to, excuse me, it's an honor to be with you tonight and to recognize Coach Whitney Morris as the TVA Teacher of the Year. Thank you, guys.
Now, the remaining three Teachers of the Year are both a school Teacher of the Year, and then they are also a district-level Teacher of the Year, and they move forward in the competition, the Tennessee Department of Ed, Tennessee Teacher of the Year competition. So they will move on to the South Central Region, and we're very proud of each of them. We'll start first with Bel Air Elementary, Dr. Nikki Tooten, our Elementary District Teacher of the Year. And I do want to say at this time, a special thank you to our Teloma Educational Foundation of Excellence, who is here. Matt Layton will be presenting a nice gift to each of our District Teacher of the Year winners as a token of appreciation for what they do, and we thank you so much for that. And he will join each District Teacher of the Year. So, Dr. Eble, tell us about Dr. Tooten.
So, out of the privilege of speaking on Dr. Tooten, she's been a Bel Air Bee. This is her fifth year with us. This is her 11th year in education, though. Before I get into her experience, talk a little bit about her family. Her and Brandon have five kids together. I believe all five are here, is that right? And her mom. So they all, they all made it to support, to support her, which I'm sure she appreciates. During her time as an educator, she's taught many different grade levels. She's had many different experiences, and really this, you know, sometimes when people move around, you wonder, why is that? The reason she moves around is because she's willing to do anything. She cares about our school system, she cares about our kids, and she always is willing to do something new to gain experience. In her time, her 11 years, she's been an assistant principal. She's taught kindergarten, first grade, second grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. She's been, she's been a 504 Coordinator. She's a part of our Threat Assessment Team. She was a part of the TCS Leadership Internship Program, and this year, she's serving as our Behavior Mod Teacher at Bel Air. You listen to all of those grade levels, and each move probably has a story. I don't know about before Bel Air, at Bel Air, they definitely do, and I'm not going to go into all of them, because there's been different needs. One, a couple of the traits that I would attribute to Nikki and her time with us at the Hive as a Bee are leadership and a very caring heart. So with leadership, she's willing to do anything, and when she sees a need, she's proactive in solving that problem. For an example, the second year, I was principal at Bel Air. We were virtual, right? And it was, it was, it was a hard thing, managing numbers and bouncing children back and forth from virtual and in-person, which fluctuates our class sizes. And before fall break, I approached Nikki. I said, "Here's the problem." And she said, "Somebody needs to move to kindergarten at fall break." She said, "And it's me, and I'm going to go do it." And I said, "Thank you. Yes, that's exactly right." Most of the time, the response would have been absolutely freaking out. She didn't do that. She made the move, did it, saw a need, fixed it. Caring, as a fifth-grade teacher, child had hygiene, different things that were needs, came to me, said there's this problem. We tried to fix it, could not get through with certain details of the situation, went out and bought the child whatever the child needed, solved the problem on Monday. So that, I thought, I never forgot that. Another leadership point slash caring point about our school, this past year, we had an opening in our Behavior Mod Room. She's perfectly happy in fifth-grade ELA, doing a great job, comes to me, says, "Dr. Eble, I think that I want that job. I think I can help save all of our kids, no matter which room they're in. I think I can do the job. I want that job. I want to learn how to do it." And I said, "Well, we're going to go down there, and you're going to spend some time in there, and you really observe and think about making this move, because it's to a sped placement," right? And she did, and I said, "Okay, are you ready?" She said, "Yes." We signed off, and she's doing it. She's done a great job. I, too, asked some of her peers for comments about Dr. Tooten. What's interesting, and I've done this the past few years, but what's interesting this year is because she's worked in four different grade levels, plus Behavior Mod at Bel Air, there's a lot of people with comments. I'm not going to read all of them. I'll give them to her, and I'll just read the highlights, okay? One said she has a great attitude in anything she does, she's innovative ideas, problem solver, puts in long hours. Nikki's a natural leader, she's compassionate towards her students, receptive to fresh ideas, empowering to colleagues. When new challenges arise, she's willing to pivot, try different approaches. While juggling daily responsibilities of being a mother, Nikki extends her care to teaching, devoting her time and energy to an ever-changing landscape. An example of where she's helped someone, this was this year, I believe. I'd never taught phonics, teacher shared. She'd been upper grades, new lower-grade teacher. Because we didn't have the right program when the grade she was at, I taught third and fourth, wasn't a part of the curriculum. Nikki taught a phonics class for me. She rearranged her schedule to help me during She rearranged her schedule to help me during my planning time and after-school. She sat with me looking over data, looking at my schedule and ideas to organize my RTI kids. She'll listen if you need to think out loud. She makes sure you have the materials you need to help your children within their groups. There's about 10 more comments on there, very similar, but I'm going to give these to you, and they're very nice. But we're thankful for your being, and it's an honor to have you with us. Congratulations.
And now, our middle-level District Teacher of the Year, Franklin Kamik. And we have seen him here a couple of times, as he is the most recent FBLA Advisor of the Year for Tennessee, two years running. Ms. Herrera.
So, just to get started, he's been teaching for 17 years, and Franklin and I actually were in the same area of FBLA. And as I traveled to regional, to district, to regional, to state, to Nationals, I would see this guy sitting in a national conference center, and not like one or two kids hovering around him, hundreds really around him, had no idea that he was at Grundy County. So, anyway, I saw at that time that he was really great at engaging young people. I saw that he built a lot of relationships, because sometimes when you get to Nationals, high school students don't want to hang out with their teacher. But they did with Franklin. You could have, see him having big conversations, really motivating them to do their best. So all of us, I know all the Teachers of the Year, the reason you got into teaching is because you love students, you love children, you want the best for them, you want to see them grow in all areas. The thing with Franklin, his words show it, but his actions say it more. His actions towards students. At West, there's not a day that I don't go in his classroom in the morning that four or five kids haven't stopped by to talk to him about something very specific. So that really pulls at my heart when I know that he's putting students first. The other thing is, he's very engaging, because he has a lot of different hobbies. And if you don't know him outside of school, he's very interested in the entertainment field, in entertainment. He loves movies. He loves different musicians. He follows them all over the country, and he loves sports. So all those little areas of his interest really translate to middle school and high school kids, and it makes him very relatable. They've always ha, can have a conversation. That's on the student side. The other side of Franklin is incredible, and it's more actions than words. There's not ever been a time that I needed something and went to Franklin, and he didn't just jump right in and quietly just went and did. He didn't have to have instructions. He just followed through and made it happen. He's a great leader in our school. He's a quiet leader through actions. A great thing about him, and I really appreciate it, he sets very high expectations, because I want West to have our students, when they walk out, to be prepared not only for high school, but for their future lives. But he's very creative. He thinks of different ways. He's one of those on the leadership team. When we're in a meeting, he will think of something totally out of the box that I would never have thought of. So I appreciate his participation on the leadership. The other side of him is that he came to me when the job opened at West Middle School, and I'm like, Lord, please bring us someone really great. I never dreamed he would leave Grundy County, because he was very faithful to his students there. But he came and asked if he could start at FBLA. I'm like, oh, yes, we can do that. And so he's only been at West for five years. He was in, he's been teaching for 17, and I know there were hundreds of kids that placed at state to go to Nationals at Grundy County. Since he's been at West, and this is middle school, middle school's a little different to deal with, but we have had three national winners, correct? One, one first place.
We are up to 12 national winners.
We have 12 national winners, and, but we've had, we've had a personal win first this past year. And I'm going to tell you, if you haven't been to an FBLA competition, they're the most competitive of any competition you will go to. Even when you go down to Chattanooga, they're competing against 6,000 to 10,000 kids. So he's producing students that are not only ready for high, middle school and high school, but beyond. What's interesting, when he goes off to these competitions, the number of people, if I show up for a conference, that are trying to recruit him for all kinds of business opportunities, and he doesn't let it. That's because he says he has a passionate for, a passion for our students, but he's really great with the business community. He has ran our concession stand this year for the basketball team, and he has pulled in high school kids to come down and work. We have community partners that are volunteering. He's great about going out and securing different types of field trips. We've been to see the Tennessee Titans, the workings behind. He's got lots of great ideas that we hope to keep doing, but we, we do know that Telahoma at West Middle School, some teachers don't want their instructional time interrupted. So we get a few field trips per year. The kids love it. They have a new experience. And our mission statement, challenging students today for a limit that lasts tomorrow, that's what he's doing. He does it every single day, and he does it in a very quiet leadership way. And I'm very thankful that Franklin Kamik is at West Middle School. And I, congratulations for Teacher of the Year.
All right. And the final District Teacher of the Year, our High School Teacher of the Year, Kristy Allen.
I met Kristy Allen three years ago. That was your first year at THS, right? As I was starting the Virtual Academy, and she agreed to come work with us over at TVA and, and build some English classes and teach some English classes. And got to know her really well when we, she went with our team to a big tech conference in New Orleans. We had a lot of great food and learned a lot of, of great things. Sometimes you get tired of hearing somebody's name. It's a, it's a great tribute to that person, but it happens a lot at THS, primarily from the students. The last thing you want to do with a student is give them something great and then take it away. They, they rebel, they revolt, they get really angry. And it was a completely new experience for me last fall. We, we, we had a transition in staffing, and of course, Ms. Allen readily helped us out and did whatever it took, but we had to load up one of her classes with, with some students. And they absolutely fell in love with her. And then the staffing solution was resolved, and we said, okay, it's time to go. And there's no experience I'd never experienced before, a student standing in my office crying and screaming and demanding to be put back with Ms. Allen. I've never, I've never experienced such. And I think, I think that really says it all, as far as who she is and what she brings to us at THS. I refer to Kristy as the kid whisperer. There's, there's some magical event that happens when students cross this threshold into her classroom. Even the, the, the least motivated, angriest, detached student just kind of says, okay, this is cool. And they're comfortable, and they feel safe, and they can learn. So many of our students are, are stuck in Maslow's Basement, and, and they can't get above that. They don't feel safe. They don't feel cared for enough, and it just happens in there. And they can, they can learn. I happened to be in her classroom for a short amount of time last fall, about 10 minutes. And I witnessed so many incredible things during that time. Student in that room that's not a strong reader, is a bit volatile, and other students in that room, I'm looking around like, okay, this is a, this is a challenge. The student who's not a strong reader, Ms. Allen says, anybody want to read? Up the hand goes. Okay, cool. And she struggled, as expected. But I looked around the room, and not one smirk, not one snicker, only help, only students helping her. And it was, it was incredible, just incredible. So, Ms. Allen is described as having a servant's heart. She navigates difficult situations with a focus on the best outcome for students. Students express gratitude for her role in personal growth, teaching them to be better individuals, and helping them succeed academically. She goes beyond traditional teaching. She tries to understand each student and treats them like her own. Her ability to make learning enjoyable, encouraging creativity, and providing support on both good days and bad is powerful. She is, she is an inspiration to us all and is an invaluable resource to our school, our students. It's an honor to work with you, and no surprise at all that you're our District Teacher of the Year. Congratulations.
It is a teacher that makes a life-altering impact on the students he or she serves. And these teachers are a perfect reflection of that truth. Congratulations to all of our Teachers of the Year. Thank you all, teachers, and your families and your friends that came. We appreciate you being here so very much, and we would love for you to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we also know that you have many things to do beyond just this meeting. So feel free to exit if you need to. We will give you a minute. Okay, we're going to hear from Mr. Jim Woodard with the Foundation. Are you, you're the Foundation President, correct?
I am.
Yes, okay, good, good.
We didn't get anybody else to speak.
We're glad you're here.
Well, I just certainly want to thank the Board, the Mad Chair, and to all of you that are involved on our school board, and to the teachers that won all tonight. It is, your Telahoma Educational Foundation is a group of individuals. It is an organization, some of you may or may not know, but the Telahoma Educational Foundation has been in existence since 1989. So we have 23 members on our educational foundation. And again, our goal is, we've raised about $1 million, you know, in the time, and it's on an interest-bearing account. And so the dollars that were given tonight to the three teachers, it comes from that. And also Franklin was one of our recipients a couple of years ago in a grant. People will come. Dr. Stevens is so nice about letting people submit grants. And when we, we missed last year's donation, because the stock market didn't do so well about a year ago. But we think this year, we'll have some dollars available for your funds. We certainly love to support the educational system. We're so proud of Dr. Stevens. We're proud of the school board, and all the teachers, and everybody that's involved in that. And Gigi serves on our board also. She's a member of the board. You saw Beth Welsh in here that gave a check away. Also, Matt Layton, who's, again, a graduate of the high school and the, and the school system here. So you've got a lot of people that are really rooting for education, and we're all big, we're big fans of what you're doing, and we will continue to do that. But again, congratulations from the Telahoma Educational Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard, for all that you all do. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Andy Witt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gigi Robinson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Ms. Stidham?
That's all in favor of Mad Chair.
Very good. Thank you so much. Unfinished business, we're moving to policy updates. Gigi Robinson.
Okay. We have several policies that you received several weeks ago since our meetings kept being delayed. So you've had several weeks to look at those. And so I'd like to just go over them quickly, the changes that are made. And these, the policies, we receive them through TSBA, and they are, sometimes there's really just very minor changes.
And sometimes change might be major. This time, they're, they're kind of minor changes with the policies. But as they're updated, our policy team meets, and we review them, look at them. Dr. Stevens then reviews them. If it's necessary, we have legal counsel review them, and then we send them to all board members, so that you can look at them. So, tonight, we are recommending a few changes to policies. The first one is Policy 1.105, and the change there is just one word, and it's to change it to be a legislative liaison in that. So that's the change with that one. 1.701 is School District Planning, and the change in this one is adding a sentence that says, "This will be incorporated into the TESA Accountability Report that must be approved by the Board and filed with the Department of Education each November 1st." All of these keep us in compliance with the Tennessee Code Annotated and with state law. Okay, 1.901, Charter School Applications. And the, there are several changes in this one that affect kind of the calendar and dates, but that they would, there would be a notice sent by December the 3rd is a change. And if December 30 falls on a Saturday, Sunday, or a holiday on which the school district offices are closed, the letter of intent is due on the next business day. And that the applications will be submitted to Telahoma City Schools, and by 11:59 PM on that February, or 11:59 PM, there would be light. The review team, if necessary, the review team would be Director of Schools, would appoint a review team, and they would have varied areas of expertise. This team may include individuals with knowledge and experience in educational leadership, instruction, and assessment. Special populations, finance, facilities, law, local community, nonprofit, governance and management, and a school board member. And also, we, there's just one change in that about the date, and it's at the board meeting in November of each year. The Director of Schools shall make that recommendation to the Board for that committee. And the only other change on that one is that the Director of Schools shall serve as the Chair of the Review Team and the contact person for answering questions about this process. So that's the change to that one. 2.400 under Revenues, a change in the Extended School Program, and just to change it to say ESP, and that the, they are received and deposited into the Extended School Program bank account, and the Extended School Program Director shall report the collections and pay the Board by ESP check. And one other change in a sentence down there that says, instead of, shall remain at the school level, shall be placed in a system-wide school fund. There's a little more explanation on the second page of that about collection of funds through online payment. And I think, as everyone knows in the world that we live in today, that that is a very changing thing. So there are some stipulations about that with the online payment. And then fundraising activities, a one, 2.601, and the change in this is, is also to address some of those changes, which is online fundraising. The school district, district is authorized to utilize online fundraising. The Director of Schools designated shall ensure that, that adequate internal controls are established, and will determine on a case-by-case basis when using online fundraising is appropriate. And there are stipulations down there for fundraising for noneducational purposes. And those would be on approval of the principal. An employee may be authorized to raise and use funds for the following noneducational purposes, which would be, an example, bereavement support, award recognition, employee morale, banquets, as such as that. So, change to that one. And the last one is 2.8051, which addresses debit cards, credit cards, and the change on that one is just changes three words. In the, in the sentence down here, it says that the unauthorized use of a debit card, credit card, or credit line shall be grounds for disciplinary action, and the change is up to and including termination of employment. So those are the changes that we recommend, the policy team recommends to the Board for approval. Very good, thank you. Do I have a motion to accept Policy Numbers 1.105, 1.701, 1.901, 2.400, 2.601, and 2.8051 on a first and final reading?
It's your move.
Motion by Pat Welsh. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Beth Harrison. Any discussion?
Thank you for your work on this. It was very clear, the way it was all laid out with the different colors. I appreciate that.
It's very interesting, when, when we meet in our committee, that sometimes it's just one word, like they just, there's, but, but you have to look at it and address it and say something.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Ms. Stidham?
That's all in favor of Mad Chair.
Very good. We have a yellow extera, extera blocking someone in, in the parking lot. It's yellow. So if that's yours...
So if that's yours, okay, oops. No, you're not in trouble. That's right, that's right. You're a visitor. That's okay. Thank you so much. 2024-25 budget, Mr. Jordan?
Well, it's that time of year, we do actually start looking at our budget for the 24, 25 school year. Earlier this week, I did reach out to all our principals and building level leaders, inter maintenance department to start putting together lists for me of possible projects, specific needs they may need. We'll gather that over the next couple of weeks so we can start to look through that, prioritize what we think we need to do, work with maintenance and the finance committee. So we're working through that process. I also reached out to our fiscal advisor at the state to get an update on when we might expect our first draft of a TESA, our funding, our primary funding source from the state of Tennessee comes from the TESA method. They said we should have something in February. I didn't say the first or the end of February, but by our next board meeting, we should have that. And then again, we'll look to get with the finance committee and we can start, start the process.
Very good. Thank you for that information. It comes around very quickly, doesn't it?
I was gonna say, it seems like we just finished.
Yes, it does. It really does. Disciplinary hearing authority, Dr. Stevens?
Yes, so every January, we come before you to recommend the members of the discipline hearing authority. And this is rooted in policy and law. So Board Policy 6317 states that the director of schools must recommend a three-member discipline hearing authority to the Board of Education for approval each year. This authority conducts hearings for students who have been suspended for more than 10 school days in case an appeal has been made. The policy, policy states that at least one of the DHA members must be a licensed employee. The administration recommends Dr. April Norris, Dr. Shannon Duncan, and Mr. Hank Jordan to serve as the discipline hearing authority and that Dr. Norris will serve as the chair. This team has worked very well, functioning together as a unit. So we certainly recommend once again, Dr. Norris, Dr. Duncan, Mr. Jordan to serve as the Telahoma City Schools Discipline Hearing Authority.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have a motion to recommend those fine people to serve as the disciplinary hearing authority?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Andy Witt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gigi Robinson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Ms. Stidham?
That's all in favor of the chairman.
Thank you so much. Moving on to new business, teacher tenure, Dr. Stevens?
So the excitement continues. This is really a big evening for us and each January, we will hope to have a slate of educators who will be eligible for tenure. As a reminder, to be eligible for tenure, an educator must have a degree from a four year college and be licensed by the state of Tennessee. Obviously, this license is based on preparation and training in specific subject areas for these educators. They should have completed a probationary period of five years or not less than 45 months. And they have to have received evaluations where they have had an overall level of effectiveness of either above expectations, which shows as a four, or significantly above expectation, which shows as a five. So that has to happen in the last two years of their probationary period. Once a teacher is eligible for tenure, he or she shall either be, one, recommended by the director of schools for tenure, or two, non-renewed. If the board denies tenure, the educator shall be dismissed. The following educators are recommended for tenure and a supervisor will be sharing a bit about each candidate prior to the administration recommending all 17 for tenure to you tonight. So from Bel Air, we have two candidates. And is Dr. Epley here? There he is. Thank you. We have Gwen Patterson and Sarah McVeigh.
So I love recognizing our teacher. I think I said this earlier in the year, we have an opportunity, obviously, teacher of the year.
And now with tenure, it's obviously a separate accomplishment, but it's still a unique accomplishment. Ms. Patterson is our speech pathologist at Bel Air, does a wonderful job. Her caseload is, let's say she's needed at Bel Air. She's very organized in her approach. She's a wonderful communicator with parents at the elementary level when you have students moving into a, you know, an IEP meeting or a screener. That's, that's a new experience for many parents and it can be a, I don't wanna say scary, but it's, it's just new and it's unique and it's something that you may not have heard before. And she does a wonderful job communicating each step of the process and that things are gonna be good and she's positive and happy. She shows up every day, she stays late, does a wonderful job for us and I'm thankful she's a bee. Ms. McVeigh is our music teacher. Ms. McVeigh or nor Ms. Patterson are here tonight and I wish both of them were, cause I would love for them to stand up so you all could, we could do this in front of, of everyone. She is somebody who's very dear to me. She's got some things going on right now medically that are obviously, some challenges. And, and she's pushed through. She comes to work every day. She, she told me, she said, "You don't really have a choice but to be positive." And I said, "No, no." I stopped her, I said, "No, you do have a choice." And some people don't choose to be positive and you choose to be positive. She has made a difference in the lives of many students at Bel Air. Our choir program is wonderful. Each year honors choir. We have students moving up. She's creative, she wants to do events. She does a wonderful job for us and so we're very thankful to have her and definitely recommend both for tenure.
Very good. Thank you so much, Dr. Epley. And from East Lincoln, we have four educators eligible for tenure that Mr. Hargrove will share about. They are Aletha Bryant, Tasha Frost, Natalie McShay, and Kayla Walls.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. Aletha, when you walk in Aletha's room, it just feels different. There's a sense of safe, there are children are comfortable, they're relaxed, they're always engaged in the learning. It's just a very natural feel in her classroom for the things that, when you draw up the perfect classroom, that's what you see when you see Aletha. This is her second time. She's received tenure in the district once and left and went to the foot of the mountain for a while and she's back and we are so proud to have her back. She's a great leader, mentor for other teachers. I have a lot of young teachers go in and observe her class. So Aletha Bryant, we're recommending. She's not here tonight. Her son Carson is at an event. Carson is an absolutely awesome, awesome child and she's right where she needs to be. Tasha Frost, we had a teacher resign late in the summer, couple of years, few years back and Tasha interviewed and we offered her a position. She started in, in one position and due to our student numbers being down, we lost a teacher, this is the same school year now, Mr. Pat. She's in a second position. And about a quarter later, we had a, a teacher resign and leave the school and we asked her to be in her third position in one school year. She's an athlete, she gets it, at a former athlete and she's a team player and she tries to get better every day. She's not afraid to ask for help, she wants direction, she takes coaching. And three jobs in one school year, she's a team player. Can't have enough of that. Tasha is not here tonight. Her and Tony just adopted a new child. So we're really excited for Tasha Frost. Natalie McShay is our third candidate for tenure. She didn't know it at the time, but her interview actually started in a What I Like About Telahoma Award Ceremony. I was sitting in the row behind her, introduced myself, whatnot, and I just sit there and listened and watched. It's all I did. And it was an interview, even though she didn't really know it was an interview. Just so refreshing. The one thing I was impressed with, other children, I think one of her children won one of the awards and whomever it was, she always had something positive to say and a relationship type with, with something else or a good characteristic with her own children. She, she's like that in the classroom. She's a former athlete, she's coachable, she loves the whole child, not just the academic piece, which is also very, very valuable, but it's about the whole child and she'll go above and beyond to help students be successful and she has a huge heart for children. We appreciate. Ms. Natalie, she's not here because of the circus of a ball game, a retainer, another ball game, and I think there's tryouts somewhere else. Yeah, wheels on the bus. Last but not least is Kayla Walls. She would be a great coach and here's why I think, and I consider teaching and coaching in the, in, in the same realm. She's not ever too high, she's not ever too whole, or too low. You get the same Kayla Walls every day. We don't get too high, we don't get too low. And that is priceless at our school because of the structure and that it provides for our students. They can depend on the same Ms. Walls every day. She's not afraid to try new approaches in classroom. Feedback in a conversation is a, feedback is a conversation with Kayla. Lot of times, people just listen to feedback. It's a two-way conversation and she's a team player and confident enough to put her thoughts and provide thoughts when asked for them. But those are our four candidates we are recommending for tenure. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have two candidates at RE Lee and they are Jennifer Bratcher and Sarah Nash.
Well, I'm excited to recommend Sarah Nash and Jennifer Bratcher, both outstanding rock star educators. And Sarah is here tonight with her husband Ryan. And so I'll tell you a little background about Sarah. So she has six total years, including this year, and she moved here after two years at Clark Montgomery County Schools. So we're very thankful that she moved to Telahoma, she and her husband. So thank you for bringing her here in 2020. And so she's been at Robert E. Lee four years. The first year she was in second grade and she didn't know it at the time, but we were doing the end of the year one-on-one conferencing and I was just like, "You know, Sarah, what, what are you kinda thinking about long-term? What are your plans?" And she said, "Well, thinking I might like to, I love where I am, but I might think I might like to teach a little bit older and maybe teach math." And she starts telling me about her love of math and the whole time I'm thinking, hmm, that really sounds good. So she is a fourth grade math teacher now, just so you know, and she's rocked it. And so with that, she has a real heart for STEM activities, robotics. She has signed up for any opportunity to learn more and do things with those. When I asked her, what were some of the things that really stood out to her? And she said, "You know, I really appreciate the relationships that we've built with our students through the house challenges among fourth grade. So they have a lot of morning meetings, really celebrate the students, they use those opportunities, they have the houses." And she said that that has made a huge impact with relationships. And so when I think about Sarah, one of the things that stands out is she truly loves students and she has that heart and wants to build relationships. She completed her master's degree in 2022. At the same time, she's going into a new grade level and trying to develop skills there. So very proud of her. I asked her, what was her most memorable teaching experience? And she shared this with me and I, I knew exactly where her heart was because I remember this. She said, "I was told by a student who had made a complete turnaround behaviorally and academically, that he knew my partner teacher and I loved him and he wanted to make us proud." And so that just really says a lot to me about Sarah. Her colleagues, and so the other day Sarah was in my office, she said, "I'd love to know what they're saying about me." I said, "Well, you'll, you'll hear." And so what they shared was, Sarah is a successful teacher who is the embodiment of putting students first. She works hard to meet the students where they are and she provides ample opportunities for them to be successful. As a teammate, she's caring and supportive. She's responsible and she's just all around wonderful. I mean, that's how they're talking about you. Sarah is a wonderful teacher in so many ways. She builds relationships with her students, provides them with engaging educational opportunities, and she's just a wonderful teammate with us. She's always supportive and helpful to bring ideas together, even when sometimes they may be last minute. And she's a hard worker. She cares deeply about her students and she strives to help them be successful. She makes learning fun and she's a great teammate and is dedicated to her career. So it is an honor, Sarah, to recommend her for tenure tonight. Jennifer Bratcher could not be here because I think she's with her children and all the events, you know? But I want to tell you something special about Jennifer. She has 18 years of experience and we were fortunate and I hate to say this, Clint, she was at Bel Air.
She was.
And if, and I love, beginning of the school year, you know, Robert E. Lee is growing. And so after the school year started, we added an additional kindergarten teacher. And Clint called me, was so wonderful, and I know this was hard for Bel Air because they're losing a rock star, amazing teacher. And she's coming to a brand new school to be a lion after school starts. And here she has this heart that's just incredible, loves Bel Air, loves being a bee, already has loved her students, and she's leaving to come to our school. But what I want to tell you that stands out to me about Jennifer, and I think Clint would echo this, she is so positive. My husband and I went over on Sunday to help her move and we walked in and she and her husband Jim are in there and you would have thought, somebody would have been rattled by then. You know, you're moving in, you're trying to get ready, there's stuff everywhere. She didn't complain, not once. She just came in, she had this positive attitude, "It's gonna be great, we're gonna make this work." And the next week, when the students arrived and I walked in that classroom, you would not have known that she had been at Bel Air and had just moved over the weekend and started a class. It was, it was, it was incredible. And she has continued that. And when I asked her colleagues, how, you know, what would be something you would say about Jennifer? And they said, "From the day she stepped in this building, she has had a smile on her face and she just has so much positivity and love for our students." And I just think that says so much about Jennifer because you know that had to be challenging coming in. So I asked Jennifer some other things just to share tonight so that you all could kinda get a true picture. And I said, "Why did you become a teacher?" And she, again, the word chose. I love when I hear, "I chose. I chose to become a teacher in hopes that I could make a positive impact on children." The joy and the gratification I receive when a child makes accomplishments, excuse me, accomplishments, no matter how big or small, it fulfills a special place in my heart. She said, "I always thrived to work on a team of educators due to my upbringing with team sports. Learning in the field, collaborating, sharing knowledge and all of these things just makes my job more special because we all share the same goal." That's, you know, teaching children becomes the best that they can, no matter what their strengths or weaknesses, and I can be a part of that. And we see that every day with Jennifer. I asked her, what was a memorable experience? And I have to read this because I think we can all identify this one, with this one. "My most memorable teaching experience was in Orlando, Florida, teaching kindergarten. The majority of the students at this particular school were Spanish-speaking students. As a true Southerner and have lived all my life in the South, dialects sounded different to those students and of course, myself. At the end of the first week of my teaching career, a little girl not following directions, spent a lot of time with her. And after the first week of school, I asked, 'Why are you not following the class rules we've been learning all week?'" This little five-year-old responded, "'Because I don't speak that cowboy language and I don't understand it.'" She said, "From that time on, I knew that my choice of career and working with the innocence of early childhood was for me." And I just think that just speaks volumes. And she has gone on to be a team leader, a sunshine committee. just speaks volumes. And she has gone on to be a team leader, sunshine committee mentor, mentee, CEO program member, accelerator reader team member, social emotional learning team member, taught PE kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and it just goes on and on. But I think what really stands out to us is just her love for students, positivity, and she is in a chosen field. And so it is an honor to be here tonight to recommend Sarah and Jennifer for tenure. We are very blessed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we have a very large group from Tullahoma High School. Brady Goodman, Leann McCullough, Jessie McKenzie, Ashley Oberstett, Kelly Orr, Samantha Stevens, and Judy Stewart. Dr. English.
You've got Jessie, right?
I've got Jessie.
Just checking.
Yep.
Let's see. We'll start with Leann McCullough, who's not able to be with us. Leann McCullough, I'll face you. Leann McCullough is simply a fantastic person. In addition to being an outstanding teacher, she is always willing to help out in the school and community. Her students love her class and they describe her as kind, funny, sweet, and understanding. Ms. McCullough is known as one of the hardest working teachers, consistently putting a smile on her face as well as others. One of her colleagues said, THS is better having her around. One of her students said, to know Ms. McCullough is to love her. The principal says, Ms. McCullough is that teacher that every school needs. The students know how much she loves them. They trust her without question and know she has their back. Her contributions to our school's climate and culture have been tremendous and it's my pleasure to recommend her for tenure. Brady Goodman. Brady Goodman is truly an experience. I proudly claim Brady as a former student, a West Middle School choir member from the late 90s. And he will proudly share some stories about a young inexperienced and of questionable judgment Greg English, which I only recently learned he remembered. Brady is praised as an excellent educator and colleague who connects well with students of all backgrounds. He maintains high expectations for every student while actively engaging them and his colleagues at school. He is described as a go-to person and always willing to help, especially with students facing challenges or those with special needs. Students appreciate his, most students appreciate his energetic and fun teaching style. One student this year said, he's just too much. I just can't, I just can't handle it. And many express gratitude for his belief in them and encouragement to excel in his class. It's truly an honor to work with Mr. Goodman and witness the incredible impact he has on the entire school. And it's my pleasure to recommend him for tenure. Ashley Oberstett. Ashley Oberstett spent the first half of this school year in a highly modified program and has transitioned now to a regular sped position for the spring semester. Her HMI partner in crime Hannah Dunlap said this about Ashley. Her outstanding teaching skills and a deep understanding of both subject matter and magnificent ability to engage students and create a positive and nurturing learning environment were evident. Ashley consistently goes above and beyond in designing innovative lesson plans which cater directly to the various and substantial needs of each student. In a highly modified classroom, there is no small feat, and she did so with grace and enthusiasm. In addition to Ms. Oberstett's exemplary teaching abilities, she goes above and beyond and is an active participant with regard to all school initiatives. Ashley demonstrates a strong sense of responsibility and resilience and enriches the school environment as a whole. I have grown as a teacher working alongside Ms. Oberstett, and she truly is a blessing to THS, TCS, and Tullahoma. Her continued presence working in the TCS school system would be a great benefit to anyone who is lucky enough to be taught by her or work alongside her. There isn't, and there isn't much for me to add to that, other than I'm very glad that she chooses to remain a Wildcat. Student feedback, as reported by Ms. Dunlap. RJ has stated that he loves Ms. Ashley and truly misses seeing her each day in the classroom because she is so kind and understanding. Tristan has said that Ms. Ashley is very kind and he enjoyed being in her classroom because she listened intently to him and supported him with decision-making. And finally, Natalie says she loves Ms. Ashley and she really misses having her as a teacher this semester. It is my pleasure to recommend Ashley Oberstett for tenure. Jessica McKenzie. Ms. McKenzie is described as a wonderful teacher who is kind, caring, and creates a comfortable and safe classroom environment at THS. Her unique teaching style makes learning Spanish more enjoyable. Students appreciate her efforts to make class fun and her dedication to all students, and they commend her for her compassion towards our English language learners as they navigate the challenges of transitioning to a new place. We are proud to celebrate Ms. McKenzie as an invaluable member of the THS faculty. She has served as an inspiration to us all this year. Judy Stewart. Ms. Stewart is an integral member of the math department at THS. Her students find her approachable and kind, and they appreciate her willingness to answer any random questions. Her students say she is one of the best math teachers they've ever had. She teaches in a way that really helps you understand and retain the information. She always offers to help you with your work. She is very nice and always fun to talk to. Ms. Stewart is recognized by her peers for effectively preparing students for end-of-course exams as well as post-secondary endeavors. I am always impressed with Ms. Stewart's willingness to work with our students and help them succeed no matter what. She is a true team player and we are fortunate to have her on the THS team. Kelly Orr. Kelly Orr is highly regarded for her care and dedication to her students, ensuring they stay on task and always providing help. Her students describe her as kind-hearted and say she brightens up people's day. They also appreciate her friendly and easygoing teaching style. Students praise her for her acceptance of everyone and emphasize her kindness. Ms. Orr is known for giving students the benefit of the doubt, offering second chances, and utilizing her talent and creativity to assist others. She is celebrated by students and her colleagues as a talented, compassionate, and supportive teacher. I personally love spending time in an art room, watching what's taking place in there. There's usually at least 31 or 32 kids and it should be chaos, but it's controlled. And they're doing all these wonderful things. And the way that Ms. Orr is able to pull that creativity out of them and to ask them about their project and the level of detail they're able to give tells me that there is so much going on there. So it's truly impressive. That's actually how I ended that. It's truly inspiring is what I said here. So congratulations. It's my pleasure to recommend you for tenure. And finally, Dr. Stevens. Dr. Sam Stevens. Dr. Stevens' enthusiasm for teaching math. Let me say that Dr. Stevens is one of my go-to people in the building. Her experience, her knowledge, I'd be similar to Ms. McKenzie. I would be completely lost without your guidance and your help. So thank you on a personal level. Dr. Stevens' enthusiasm for teaching math is apparent, and she has the ability to reach even those students like me who don't consider themselves math people. Her students describe her as patient and understanding. She helps them understand rather than rushing through lessons. She is dedicated to her students and meeting them where they are in understanding math without judgment. As department chair, she works tirelessly to continue the tradition of excellence that the Tullahoma High School Math Department is known for. Dr. Stevens' enthusiasm, passion, dedication, and experience make her a true five-star educator. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's 15 so far. And we have two more, and they are district-wide educators. And Dr. Sudberry is going to speak about Chris Morris. He is the spouse of Whitney Morris, who we just recognized as a Teacher of the Year. Dr. Sudberry.
Chris Morris is happily married to Whitney Darlington Morris. Together, they embrace the joys of parenthood with their two daughters. Emma, at the age of six, is currently thriving in kindergarten at Robert E. Lee Elementary School, while younger Riley, aged four, eagerly anticipates her upcoming kindergarten year at Robert E. Lee Elementary. Chris exemplifies an unwavering dedication as a parent by consistently introducing their children to the marvels of the world. And this was hard for me to write because it's hard to separate Chris and Whitney because you can't separate them as parents because they complement each other so much. Their family loves outdoor adventures, actively engaging in sports, and regularly attending church, which creates that well-rounded and enriching environment for their children's growth and development. Did you see the igloo that they built there in Snowmageddon 2024? It was amazing. I'm not sure who enjoyed it most. The kids or Whitney, but I think it was Whitney. Chris started his professional journey in the environmental drilling and contracting. He later transitioned to the oil fields where he specialized in isotherm absorption. That's AD, not AB. Subsequently, Chris made another successful shift to specialize in environmental compliance, demonstrating his adaptability and commitment to making a positive impact in this field. In 2016, Chris joined Tullahoma City Schools, initially serving as an educational assistant at Tullahoma High School, and then as a bus driver. The subsequent school year marked a significant milestone as he transitioned to an educator role, teaching subjects such as environmental science, biology, anatomy and physiology, and credit recovery. Leveraging his valuable experience from the oil fields, Chris skillfully integrated practical, real-life applications into course materials, enhancing the learning experience for his students. He was also voted as a THS Teacher of the Year by his peers in 2019. In September 2020, Chris transitioned to the Technology Department, assuming the role as the Instructional Technology Specialist. His exemplary work ethic and unwavering commitment to helping educators utilize technology have been outstanding. His proactive approach to sustain a breast of technological advancements underscores his dedication to professional development. Any given day finds Chris immersed in various roles. He could be assisting a teacher with integrating assignments in Canvas or Google Classroom, conducting training sessions for educators on Parent Square, leading a group of third-grade students in the dissection of cow eyes, or diligently resolving technical issues from his office. That's just to name a few. Chris selfishness, selflessness shines through his willingness to assist and mentor colleagues, demonstrating a genuine passion for the growth of both students and educators. Throughout his educational journey, he has consistently exhibited a deep commitment to enhancing the overall educational experience for all stakeholders. I highly recommend Chris Morris for tenure.
Thank you very much. And our 17th educator eligible for tenure this evening is none other than our CTE Director Jessie Kinsey. Before joining Tullahoma City Schools in 2018, as a high school counselor, Jessie spent 11 years in Grundy County, where she previously earned tenure there. Jessie has been married to Paul for 18 years, and they have three exceptional children, all in Tullahoma City Schools. Henry's a sophomore, Garrett is a seventh grader, and Hayden is a first grader. She joined TCS as one of the high school counselors and served in that role for three years. Then she transitioned into the Tullahoma High School AP CTE Director role. She held that position for two years. And this year, she transitioned into the full-time TCS CTE Director, and we heard great things from her tonight. We see her passion and her heart of that, there is no doubt. Having worked very closely with Jessie over the last several years, gotten to know her well, evaluated her work these last few years, it is easy to see her commitment to students, her love of them, her desire to see them become their very best outside of high school and to pursue their career goals. She is committed to career and technical education, that school-to-work pathway. She understands it is a life-changing opportunity for our students. She collaborates with people inside and outside the school district to ensure the best opportunities are available for everybody. She writes, manages grants. As you heard about the innovative schools model tonight. She oversees CTE funding expertly. Don't you agree, Hank? Amazing. She thinks outside the box, is a consummate team player, and spends a lot of time in professional learning, always focused on what's best and right for students. She is amazing. I highly recommend Jessie Kinsey for tenure. And quite frankly, all 17 of these individuals, I highly recommend for tenure. They have met all of the criteria that is required by law. These are exceptional educators, and they make me think about that statement we hear, and I'm going to put them on the spot because they're going to finish it. Students don't care how much you know until they know that you and they are a group that you can see. That's a part of who they are. So, Madam Chair, I certainly administration recommends accepting and approving the 17 tenure candidates as presented tonight.
Very good. Wow, that was wonderful to hear about all of you. We are so thankful that you're with Tullahoma City Schools. I would not like hearing about y'all in another district. Do I have a motion to accept and approve the 17 tenure candidates as presented?
Some move, but can I make a quick comment?
Can we do the motion, then we'll have a discussion?
Please.
Yes. Motion by Pat Welsh. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Andy Witt. Is there any discussion?
This is, I probably should be called out on this because this is not really pertinent to the motion. But Ms. Gilbert brought up the situation where Ms. Bratcher had to move. And a valued person in the community came to me, it may be a first or something like that, and let me know that there was a whole lot of national teeth over all that. And I'm not sure if they're talking about national teeth at which school, but I thought the best thing to do is let's go a week and see what happens. And I'll get you some names and get you the communication channels that need to take place. And I saw a person almost to the hour in one week, and everything was wonderful. And Dr. Somebody, and I believe Ms. Gilbert and Dr. Everett both were involved in that. And we've got a great staff, and things are happening all the time that we don't know about, that are taken care of behind the scenes. I applaud both of those people for that, I think. Neither one of them know I was going to speak to that tonight.
Great. Yes. Is there anything else?
I just would echo that, how exciting it is to know the quality of teachers that we have in our system that are so appreciated.
Yes, absolutely. Anything else? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Ms. Stidham?
That's all I have for my question.
Very good. Congratulations.
All right.
And I know some of you have been waiting a long time, so please feel free to exit.
Yes, and Ashley, your boys, they have been here a very long time. And I loved their faces when they were talking about you. They were just screaming and so.
So sweet. So sweet. Y'all are very good. Thank you all.
Oh, yeah. They've been good.
District report. Dr. Stevens.
Yes, I do want to acknowledge and recognize Jennifer Matlock, who's with us this evening. Don't try to get away.
She's been sitting there the whole time.
Managing the tenure candidates and all the rules and how many years and where have you been in Tennessee. You should see the spreadsheets that we have by school. And this is something she has to update every time someone new arrives or someone comes back. And we go into board minutes, have they had tenure before? Have they not? There is a lot to do there. And I do want to recognize you in front of everyone for your management of that. That was 17 people that you have really kept your eye on for quite some time. So thank you. Thank you. All right, FARA update. Since the special call meeting in January, and if you've not been over there, go, go, go. Things are happening at FARA. The construction trailer was delivered last week, hoping to get power and water hooked up real soon. The playground equipment is being removed, just about all gone. A couple of pieces that they can save, they're saving off to the side. Site demo, including concrete removal, has started. Silt, fencing, construction entrance, and other erosion control methods are being put in place this week. As soon as we have a grading permit, the site grading will begin. And we are rebid-
And we are rebidding those major scopes, if you'll remember from that last visit, HVAC, building in concrete, casework and countertops, and that's actually happening this Thursday. So a lot going on at FARA, please stop by. Another update I want to talk to you about is a substitute update. In the last four years, we have worked so hard to improve the number of substitutes. Kudos to Dr. Norris, Jennifer Matlock, principals, and everyone who's worked on this across the district. Just to give you a flavor of how have we evolved with substitutes. Prior to the pandemic, we had 49 substitutes here in Telahoma City Schools. 20 were certified, 29 were non-certified. In the year of the pandemic, that's 2021, we plummeted to 27. And you can imagine why that happened. That happened across the country. People were not interested in coming in to serve in that capacity. So we worked very hard to figure out, how can we lift it back up and try to get to 49? Let's get to that pre-pandemic number. So the next school year, we really had very little change. We hovered at 29 in and out, 17 certified, 12 non-certified. So we determined that we would change pay, which you all certainly supported. We started sending out flyers to everyone through the schools, started using social media, leaving the substitute teaching posting open constantly. And we then changed last year to go from 29 to 43. So we were climbing back up to that 49. This year, right now, as of today, we're at 52, and that does not include the nine who are in long-term subpositions. So we are exceeding our pre-pandemic levels, and I thought you all would like knowing that. Additionally, we have eight in the queue, eight that we're working on, so that's great news. Something else I want to update you on, and I was hoping that the embargo would be lifted and I could announce it tonight, and that's the district designation. So unfortunately, the embargo is not lifted. I do happen to know what it is, so I can't wait for y'all to find out. But as a reminder, the district earns a designation, and it's one of these five words, exemplary, advancing, satisfactory, marginal, or in need of improvement. Those are the things that a district gets. Schools receive letter grades based on the test. The district does not receive any letter grade, it receives that status, exemplary, advancing, satisfactory, et cetera. So, schools can also receive designations in addition to letter grades, like reward or target support improvement. So there are other things there. You know, when the embargo is lifted, we could have a school that we might be celebrating as well. So very excited. You can imagine, with all of our test data improving, if you'll remember, Dr. Boone shared that in August, at all grade levels, 3, 8. You can assume that you will probably be very pleased with that designation with the district receiving a Level 5, the highest score you can receive in growth. You can assume things are going really well in Telahoma. So, wanted that embargo to be lifted, it wasn't, but we'll be sharing that with you soon. Some student successes, just real quick to highlight. I do want to recognize, we had 31 band members from East Middle, West Middle, and the high school traveled to Murfreesboro last weekend to participate in the MTS BOA All Mid-State Band Clinic. All of these students were awarded seats after auditioning before Christmas against hundreds of other students from the middle Tennessee area. At the clinic this past weekend, they rehearsed with talented conductors from across the country, and then they performed at Lipscomb University in Nashville. In addition, eight of these students from the high school have qualified for Tennessee All-State Band. They will travel to Opryland in April to perform alongside our state's top musicians, and we hope to be able to recognize those state performers soon. Earning a seat in the Tennessee All-State Band is our state's highest honor and also awards them the status of graduating with distinction in May. And we had several athletic teams that were incredibly successful and are continuing to be successful. So there's lots of great things happening in sports. I do want to recognize, West Middle's continuing on in their pursuit of maybe moving toward that state competition. They've got in the game Thursday night at 6:00. So if you get a chance, please go by West Middle School. Madam Chair, I think that's a lot.
That's great. I don't really have anything to add because we had so many wonderful things tonight. There was, I mean, it's all the wonderful things and all the, everything good going on and all the wonderful teachers. Thank you all so much, thank you, Board. City Board Liaison Report, I believe that Mr. Berry had to leave, but today's his birthday, so we'll send him birthday wishes. Personnel, Dr. Stevens.
So you have within your packet the personnel changes for both December and January.
Thank you. Monthly Financial Report, Mr. Jordan.
Also presented in your packet will be our financials through December 31st, which is halfway through our year, so if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else to come before the Board? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some moves.
Motion by Gigi Robinson, is there a second? Second by Beth Harrison, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.